Uh. Can I just start the meeting, Sean?
Yes, let me.
Sean, should I start?
Yes, you can.
All right.
Recording has started.
Welcome to the Design Review Commission Special Meeting of March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three. Members of the audience may bring to the commission's attention any item that is not on the agenda. Please complete a request to speak or the way will be by raising your hand uh on the online and submit to the staff liaison. Speakers are generally given two to three minutes at the discretion of the chair. Please be advised that by law, the commission is unable to discuss or take action on issues presented during the public comment period. According to state law known as the Brown Act, items must first be noticed on the agenda before any discussion or action. So first, we have to establish a quorum. So if each member would would say their name and that you're here, would you start, David?
David Blockus here.
Michael Maas here.
Jeffrey Monty here.
Stuart Klein here.
Sam Harding here. All five members are present. Uh, the next item is the consent calendar. These items will be considered by one motion unless any member of the commission or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. Any item removed from the consent calendar for discussion will be handled by the discretion of the chair. First is the Design Review Commission Minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty three. Is there any comments or corrections to those minutes?
No.
If none, could I have a motion?
Move to a brief minutes.
And a second? All we have a roll call again, David.
Hi.
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 Hi. All five are in the affirmative.
Chair, Chair Harding, connection from the second.
Michael Maas. Yeah. Next is our first item, which is eight twenty five Parma Ave, Parma Way and our person who Sean is going to be presenting to us. Is that?
Sure. We're that was last, I think that's last time we're be working.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you. I got it here. We get a little rain soaked. The first item is one, two, four, eight via Huerta and would Sean again be present this to us? Are you going to appear on on the screen too, Sean, or?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Harding and Commissioners. The project before you is a design review application for new two-story house at twelve forty eight via Huerta. This is a three thousand four hundred and sixty-six square foot first story house with six hundred and twenty-four square feet of the second story. This project was previously reviewed by the commission on February fifteenth and the item was continued. Um, at the February fifteenth meeting, the Design Review Commission considered the proposed project following input from the applicant and from residents. Uh, the commission voted unanimously to continue the item. The commission raised a concern that it that a neighbor had leave it there with an easement on the subject site that limited the structure to maximum height of one story. Um, the applicant, uh, in the applicant's response, they did provide staff title report uh for the site and they also provided a copy of their CCNRs. Uh, in reviewing the title reports, staff did not find that there was a restriction on the height of the structure. Um, while the CCNRs did talk about height, the city's position is that we do not enforce CCNRs. Those are a private civil issue between the resident and the neighbors. However, um, we also did not find a CCNR as a limited structure to what's her height for the CCNRs. Um, the staff has provided uh the staff report with the previous staff report and the finding conditions recommend.
Let's conclude after the question. Uh, any questions for staff?
No. No questions.
Okay. Okay. Uh, do we have a presentation from uh the owner or architect? Sean?
Um. I do not. She's the owner.
Yeah, we are in the meeting. This is Henry then, uh, architect. Um, we don't have to repeat whatever we had last time. Nothing new had been added. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Okay, uh, we don't see you, but we hear you. So thank you. Uh, so no other comments from uh the owner or the architect. Oh, there you are. Hello, Henry.
Nice.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Uh, any questions or comments from commissioners to Mr. Zhang?
Nope.
No.
Nope, no questions, no comments. Thank you very much. Uh, are there any comments from uh other interested parties on this? Project?
So if there's a member of the public who'd like to speak in the item, uh, please raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand, please provide us your name. Providing your name is optional. I currently do not have anyone that has raised their hand. And there appears to be no members of the public who wish to speak on the item.
Okay. So seeing none or hearing none, we'll close the public comment and open it to commissioners for discussion. David, would you like to begin?
I don't think there's any discussion needed. I think we all. Well, I think we all accept the project as it was subject to that one question about the easement since there's no easement. I have no questions. I could make a motion if someone.
Well, let's go around it. Michael, any questions?
No, I agree with um David. I agree with David and Michael as well. Um, project was a, it was good. The roof was uh appeared to not be abstract in interviews anyway. And uh, the homeowners were supposed to, uh, I mean, the neighbors were supposed to come up with the uh some proof of CCR, but did not. They did not.
Sure.
Uh, no comments.
Okay, no comments. Shall we close? Close the commissioner's comments. Is there a motion?
SC twenty-two dash zero zero three one for the property twelve forty-eight via Huerta, subject to the action. Commissions and finally.
And is there a second?
Right.
Okay. Did you get that, Sean?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Let's go around, so.
All right. All right.
And I clearly carries five zero. Uh, thank you very much. Good luck on your project.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your help.
Perfect. Thank you. Our next project is one zero eight one Nottingham SC twenty-two dash zero zero three zero. Again, Sean, uh, you are the project planner. Could you give us that your report?
Uh, good evening, Chair Harding. The the item before you tonight and commissioners, the item before tonight is a designer view application. In existing single-story residence, the project includes fifty-one square feet addition of third story, a two hundred and eighteen square foot quadruple rear patio and a ninety square foot addition of the second story. Um, on the screen before you is the proposed rendering of the project along the front side. An orientation of the along the rear and the left side of the structure and on the right side. Um, the screen before you provides the the subject site, subject site is located in diverse character neighborhood as defined in the city's residential design guidelines. The parcels in the neighborhood um have similar sizes and forms. However, at the end of the cul-de-sac, we do have that normally shaped lot. Uh, joy structures do have uh similar setbacks are lower scale one and two-story structures with simple roof forms. The applicant again is proposing. The applicant is proposing a fifty-one square foot addition. That is located at the addition is for the first story and the two hundred and eighteen square foot rear patio. The proposed locations of the addition um is the first very edition is located in the red color on the screen for the three one square footage of the first story. The rear patio is located in red along the rear. And then the second story ninety square foot edition is located outlined in yellow on the screen. Along the front south elevation, the applicant is proposing again the fifty-one square foot addition is located here. That is being proposed as a reading room. They also proposing a single panel front door to be replaced with a two-panel front door. The removal of the existing uh removal and replacement of two existing windows with new windows with a similar along the front elevation. Along the interior right side elevation, they're proposing again that addition. That's the fifty-one square foot addition for a reading room. The removal of the six existing windows with new windows with a similar style and pattern. Uh, along the left elevation, um, they're proposing the removal or replacement of four existing windows with new windows with a similar style, pattern and location. Um, along the rear elevation. Along the rear elevation, as stated before, they're proposing a new covered patio. The removal and replacement of seven existing windows with new windows along the first story and the removal of one existing window and a three-panel sliding door with a new seven-panel sliding door, which is located here. Uh, designing includes a ninety square foot addition at the second story that is located here for a new bathroom. Um, and we'll show more detail from that elevation in the next quarters. Um, the applicant uh differentiated the existing uh in the grayish color in your plan set. And then the legend shows that the posed work is in this white transparent color. Um, this is for showing the proposed uh east side of the structure. Uh, this is showing the east side. This is the proposed reading room at the first story, which is fifty-one square feet. Along the east side also shows the second story addition, uh, which the proposed bathroom. As the commission uh can clearly see, there are no proposed windows facing towards the right side elevation. So there are no potential privacy attacks along the right side. Um, along the left side, the applicant is proposing um. You know, uh, again, the ba- bathroom addition, they are proposing a tall second-story window, which does exceed the four-foot six-inch sill height. Um, there are no other windows proposed along the left elevation. Uh, there are no additions or modifications besides window modifications proposed on left elevation. Along the rear elevation, we have the rear perspective of the second story, um, which they do have a second-story window, a small second-story win- second-story window oriented towards the rear yard. We do have proposed uh uh first floor patio that's oriented towards the rear. Along the front of the house, again, the applicant is proposing modifications to windows and doors, changing the door from a single door to a double door and then changing overall window sizes and forms, but maintaining similar locations at the separate story. At the second story, the applicant is maintaining similar-sized windows of the traditional design. Um, this white area is the location of the proposed fifty-one square foot reading room or on the first floor. Uh, the applicant provided a, um, you know, elevations, we sent also outlined the materials at the bottom of the pages on sheet A four point five and sheet A four point six. The landscape plan um is is shown in the project and its plan is to retain the existing landscaping on the site. Uh, the antlet, the applicant has listed all the proposed trades on the site. Um, and we have proposed any removal of existing. Yeah, that supports the proposed project and and this concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any comments from commissioners, questions for staff? Being none, no question.
All right.
Close uh commissioners' comments and the presentation of the owner or architect.
Yeah, like last time, I'm not seeing the.
No hands raised?
The applicant is present if they could provide their presentation if they have one. The applicant does not appear to be present.
All right.
Although the applicant is present for the commission, the commission can still act on that proposal.
What are they sign on at seven and go, there's nothing here.
Potentially.
Good point. So, shall we proceed, Sean?
Yes, um, a member, the applicant being present is in requirement for a project to move forward. Um, especially with the minor nature of the project, the commission could rule on what they have before you.
Okay. And do we uh need to ask if there are any neighbors or other interested parties?
Yes, we follow the same process for the agenda. If, you know, if the, uh, if members of the public would like to speak on the item and then if the commission has questions for them and then closing public comment and then commission discussion if there, there's any.
Being none?
Would you like me to check to see if there?
Yeah, if there are any and.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to speak on on this item for ten eighty-one Nottingham Way, uh, please raise your hand. Um, um, if you're not able to raise your hand or can't find the function, please unmute yourself and provide us your name. Chair Harding, it does not appear that we have a member of the public who'd like to speak on the item.
All right. Thank you, Sean. So we'll close the comments from the owner or architect or other interested parties and uh come back to the commission and hear from commissioners on this item. Comments, commissioners?
No comment.
No comments? I don't see any comments?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, minor changes, so.
Okay. Given that? Could I have a more?
Move to approve. Item SC twenty-two dash zero zero three zero at one zero eight one Nottingham Way with the listed the ID and.
Is there a second? All right. We uh here Commissioner Blockus.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
I clearly carries all five in favor. Thank you very much if you're listening and uh we'll now move to our third item, uh, seven forty-nine University Avenue SC twenty-two dash zero zero three two. We have a planner Lou will be giving us the presentation.
Uh, good evening, Chair Harding and Commissioners. This is Jada. Before you are going to present a design review at C twenty-two dash zero zero three two for the construction of a new two-story house at seven forty-nine University Avenue. Project built consists of one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight square foot floor area at first story and one thousand two hundred and twenty-three square foot floor area. Also include that ADU, but it's not part of our discussion tonight. And this slide is the 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 proposed house rendering. Mark, as marked on this slide, the property is located from from in the University Avenue and local between South Air Longchee Avenue and. With regard to the characteristics of the neighborhood, it is considered as the consistent character neighborhood according to the rest of the design guideline. And the home in a media neighborhood are a combination of one parade and two third homes with two third homes as seven thirty-one, seven thirty-seven and seven thirty. The Royal University Avenue. The property is in the activity, here to have and feature low to moderate uh skill play. Common materials used in a neighborhood include the wood stakes, the composition she goes and filed for the root material and the faculty siding with so many other components that they are creating for the exterior. This slide provides post-bipon. The the first floor is outlined in the voted block line and the second floor is highlighted in the grist pattern. The subject site needs a narrow law definition, so the first story site setbacks is reduced to um the six-point-one feet. Furthermore, as the house is defined to have thirty-five-foot front stepback, the second set size reduced to eleven-point-one feet. As commissioners can find from the site plan, uh, the second story messing is um is beyond the um overall, the house is found consistent with the R one dash tens on industry standards, including the setbacks, water coverage, whatever ratio they like, climb height limit, et cetera. But he he would be mentioned that the residents will maintain the circulation of the existing residents, which is defined to place university with the pedestrian access while the proposed two-two-car attached garage is uh situated towards the back of the property and facing the alleyway. This is the proposed first floor plan, which includes attached two-car garage, a kitchen, restroom, dining room, and attached ADU as head. And this is the second floor, which will have three bedrooms with two. It is both innovation fund, which is found compatible in design in the surrounding neighborhood by using design plans that have hip and bayonet roof deck and system horizontal gate line and fourteen uh foot projecting from uh from porch. And um also it has the articulated architecture on both first and second story. When I see of the new house is found uh consistent with the rest residential design guideline and the neighborhood as it has a uniformed plate height of nine feet and one inch at the first story and roof design also in integrated with three-in-twelve slope at the first story and four-in-twelve slope at the second story. The project also provides the high-quality material finished with horizontal harding board siding, fiberglass brick windows and walls. This slide provides the two side elevations. With regard to the privacy, all the windows at the second story will have at least so staff plan is consistent with the rest special design guidelines to mitigate the privacy. This is a rear elevation, uh, which will be also visible from the public alleyway. And as it presents on this um point, that the rear elevation also features consistent articulation, messing and other architectural details, um, which we did find well-integrated with the overall house. The privacy of the second story will be about fifty feet away from the neighboring property room. And there are screening locations proposed along half of the rear top line. So staff does not have concerns with the privacy of the invasion or staff that probably there's provided is the proposed landscaping with a number of screening vegetation. Those along the property lines and the rear property lines. Regarding the trees, there are ten existing trees located within the proximity of the type and one protected tree which is will be removed to choose full structure conditions. And the building is placed by a painter which was Chinese. All other people will be reaching additionally, the condition is added to the to the conditions for that all the screening vegetation shall be mounted with an annual size of fifteen. For the for the and then regarding the project's community outreach on August twenty-sixth, twenty the applicant provided certified mail to the neighborhood for early community awareness. And um another online community meeting was also hosted on December seventh, twenty twenty-two for working the engagement. The community of community and the group of community outreach are attached to the staff report in a captioning E for commissioners reference. So with all the information presented, Steph now recommends that the Design Review Commission approve that now concludes the presentation and.
Thank you. Planner Lou, uh, any questions for staff? The yes, one, Michael?
Yeah, I have a question, Joe. Um, did the apple can submit any uh office report?
Or?
There is one on the. You know, the attachment B is an arborist report.
Yeah. There should be an arborist.
So I guess the my question is the um, there are some existing tree at the front corner and the rear corner. Um, I I guess you already reviewed and this uh office report uh should have addressed that. Uh, I know it's it's a, the front is approximately the same location existing house. But the rear garage seems to be a few feet closer to that neighbor's tree at a corner at the rear.
So just looking at the arborist report, Michael, it has many pictures of um some um digging that was done around several of the trees and uh each tree is numbered and it and the distance and so forth. So that is, that is in the report. Um, I don't know if that helps with your with your question.
Somehow I, I, yeah, I don't, I didn't bring that down, but I I reviewed two weeks ago. So, okay, anyway, as long as the report covered, that'll be fine. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I want to clarify also that, um, on the page fourteen of the arborist report, it shows the location of the trees and tree lines. So the front trees and the rear trees actually, uh, appears to be not, would not be impacted so much by the construction. The, uh, the ex- forgery trench that was made for the side trees, uh, that staff had concern when reviewing the project.
Okay, thank you. That's why.
Any other questions? David? All right. Seeing none, do we have, uh, questions or comments from the owner or architect, Sean? Do you have someone who's, um? Hannah Chu is Chu, I.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi there. And who are you?
My name's Hannah Chu. I'm a planner with Thomas James Homes, applicant for seven four-nine university.
All right. Let, uh, would you like to speak?
Yeah, yes.
Up, up to ten minutes.
Okay, just gonna share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Everybody can hear me? Great. Like I mentioned, my name's Hannah Chu with Thomas James Homes, um. I'd also like to introduce, um, Aaron Hollister from Thomas James Homes. He's here on the call as well. And we also have our project architects from B S B Design, Matt Hornercheck and Joe Pittsner, um, here to, um, answer any questions that we may, uh, come across tonight. So diving right there, um, as John mentioned, we're proposing a two-story home within the context of the ten neighboring homes. We analyze in the neighborhood compatibility worksheet, uh, you can see that outlined here in these red blocks. Three were two stories, um, indicated in yellow. Um, and then you will also see on the screen that I've highlighted four additional two-story homes within the region of the neighborhood. Just giving context to, to story around us. Um, as for the neighborhood outreach conducted, um, as John mentioned already, initial neighborhood notices were sent via certified mail. Um, at the end of August of twenty twenty-two, uh, the project then went through, um, a redesign phase. And so, uh, we sent new notices out with updated plans on November eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And that these notices also contained an invitation to a virtual neighborhood meeting. And the neighborhood meeting was hosted on December seventh, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, and it was great. Three neighbors attended, neighbors from seven five six and seven four five University Avenue. Attended and, um, neighbor from seven three six orange. Um, so just giving context, uh, seven three six orange is our rear neighbor. Um, seven four five is our adjacent neighbor here, and then seven five six is our neighbor across the street. Um, and so, uh, neighbor at seven five six university across the street, uh, she had questions regarding demolition and construction timeline. We explained that our demolition process, um, and a team from, uh, Thomas James would reach out and notify neighbors with a flyer of dates. That work, uh, would be done and there would be contact information provided to call if there's any concerns during the process. And we would also have a team on site to coordinate with adjacent neighbors. And then, uh, neighbor seven four five next door, we worked directly with her, uh, throughout the design review application process. Uh, specifically regarding fencing and existing vegetation, uh, between the properties. And during the meeting, she had concerns, um, regarding HVAC noises or HVAC system and potential noise arising. We assured her that our HVAC system is proposed to be closer to the center of the site in the rear rather than along, um, boundary lines. And so that appeased her comments. Um, and then seven three six orange avenue, um, they had concerns regarding alley access during construction, privacy and driveway concerns. And so we looked into them. We looked into the concept of swapping the location of the driveway. Um, but ultimately the, uh, driveway location remained the same as we're trying to use existing site conditions. And then, um, as for, um, this neighbor had also brought up, um, that the original proposed, uh, exterior color of the home, which of the lighter, it was a white, whiter color. Um, it was gonna be a little bit more of an eyesore. So we went back to our design team and found a little bit of a darker color. To appease the neighbors' preferences, um, seven four five university, um, also agreed that it would have, the white color would have been a little bit, um, of an eyesore. So the current renderings that you see on the screen, um, the darker color that's proposed is what we, uh, changed it out for. Um, seven three six, uh, orange avenue, they also, uh, suggested reducing the size of the, um, existing second story windows. However, to meet egress requirements, the window size was not altered. Um, the neighbor did express an understanding about the egress requirements and that they, that may not allow us to reduce the window size. But as privacy can, um, was a concern to the neighbors, um, we, we put a lot of effort into the landscaping as a method of extended privacy. Um, the slide here shows a red dotted line indicating the, uh, locate, the second story floor plan, um, with the window locations. And so you can see that along the eastern boundary, um, along the eastern property line, uh, we have the existing canopy of trees, uh, that'll shade all second story windows from the neighbor, um, at seven five one university. And then along the western boundary line, we have the evergreen vegetation to provide privacy screening to the neighbors on the other side at seven four five. And then we also providing ever screen, evergreen screening vegetation in rear. And then as John indicated, um, one tree is proposed for removal, tree number six, um, the highlighted tree down here. Um, the removal of tree number six should not, um, take away from any privacy mitigation. But as you can see, it's already a part of the existing tree canopy and the removal of it, um, will, it'll still remain to be the same size canopy. Um, so that should, um, that shouldn't provide any, any sort of issue there with that privacy screening. And so that is the end of my brief presentation. Uh, once again, my team is here to answer any questions you may have. And thank you once again for your attendance tonight.
Maybe there's questions for owner architect?
No. Seeing though, are there any speakers on this item? That are online?
Um, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak on the item, please raise your hand. There currently are no raised hands.
If someone cannot raise their hand, um, please unmute yourself and provide us your name. Providing your name is optional.
Chair Harding, we currently do not have anyone who's raised their hand or has.
Right, Sean? Um, and we'll close public comment and move to, um, conversations with commissioners or. Who would like to begin? We could start on this, go around this way this time. Stuart?
Uh, I think it's a well-designed project. It's in character with the neighborhood and there was adequate outreach. And, uh, the biggest concern I saw was the arborist report, which I think addressed all of the tree concerns. So I don't have any other additional comments.
Um, hi Hannah. Um, just lately with all these rains, I, I saw that the front and the rear of the house don't have any, uh, what's called, uh, overhangs. Um, maybe, maybe a foot or so could probably help the, the, uh, windows getting, requiring a lot of maintenance, but that's, that's just it, that's.
Michael?
Yeah, generally I'm, um, in favor of the, this, uh, this design. Um, you know, same thing, I just wonder why that overhang is so minimal, but I guess that's pretty minor. Um, the other one is that I was in the beginning of wondering why the house, the exterior color is so dark, uh, so gray and dark. Uh, but I guess that's, uh, the neighbor's input that, uh, I personally think that, uh, you know, I mean, not, not the contrast white, but somewhere in between would make the house really nice. Yeah, but overall I'm in favor.
All right.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a substandard lot widthwise, so your setbacks are tight. It's a relatively big house for that little space. But I think they designed it the best that they could to make sure that it sort of nestled its way in. And I think with the privacy screening, there's not much, uh, issue, you know, as far as that. So mass and bulk, I don't see any privacy. I don't see anything. Um, the only questions I'd have or thoughts for you folks is in the construction. Presumably all of your work is going to be in the front yard as far as access to it versus that small little alleyway, which, uh, when I went there a couple of times. For some reason seems to have a lot of traffic, uh, for that little space, so, uh, my only suggestion would be, you know, make sure you do things coming from the front versus the back, but that's here nor there. But I, I would support the project.
Okay, I also support the project. Do we have a motion?
Here. Uh, motion to approve SC twenty-two dash zero zero three two for the property at seven four-nine University Avenue. Subject to the attached listings and findings.
Good, a second. Is there a motion? Uh, okay, uh, roll call. Commissioner?
Hi.
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 Hi. Congratulations, your project is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing at, at our, uh, last, uh, commission meeting. Thank you very much. With that, we'll close that portion of the, uh, our meeting and, um, I don't know if you have any, I was gonna raise a few things about, first of all, um, form seven hundred. So, um, there's been some questions about that. As it turns out, I talked to the mayor today. Anyone who has been on and doesn't have an updated seven hundred must complete that. So I had a question of when, when we might no longer be a commission, would that be a, it doesn't matter, any service, uh, during this year. Uh, we have to complete form seven hundred. So I've done it every year. I don't know if you've done it in other commissions, but, uh, anyway, it is a requirement. Uh, there's, seems to be some, uh.
Would you remind me what a form seven hundred is?
It's a judiciary, uh, Brown Act, uh, requirement.
Financial interest in.
You have to list, you don't have to list all of your things, but you have to, you have to make some declarations.
Within a radius. No, I, I did that.
You did form seven hundred?
Uh, the county, the city clerk emailed me something before I started asking me to disclose.
Okay, so you did say that, that is.
That's form seven hundred.
If, if you haven't, he will let you know.
Okay.
Same as Stuart, I'm in the same mode. Okay.
Michael, any question?
Like two weeks ago, but, uh, my question is, we still have to do one last, I mean, next year for this years, right? Cause this time we did it for last year.
Yes, yeah. Uh, probably, I, I don't know. I don't know kind of when the, when the, um, the timeline ends. David, do you have any questions about it or?
No, I'm just, you're gonna kick me out either which way, so I.
Well, just so they don't charge you ten dollars a day, that was what the, the last.
No, I'll, I'll do it. I had concerns cause it's like, okay, well, we're ending, why are we completing forms after we're done?
As did I, and, um, so that was why I did, uh, assurance that it's I'm, the timeline isn't as important as the service time, so. Do you agree with that? I mean, we're, we're all planning to complete those timely. And then the last thing is, um, what's, what's in our future? I, I.
Before we go on to that, can we be clear is, will the city contact us if our form filling is deficient? Or is it on us to?
No, the city clerk will look at it and if there are any, if there's anything that's not completed correctly, I'll let you know.
They will do that.
So you won't be fined ten dollars a day?
So I will wait to hear from the city if I need to fill anything else out.
Okay, um, and then, um, I don't know if this actually is our final meeting. I'm looking to Sean to find out if that is the case.
I had been advised it is, but we, I've been advised that it is the final meeting, um.
It would have been nice if we had been advised.
Well, it wasn't the next, next meeting, which would have been the fifth or sixth, supposed to be our last, but because it's a holiday, that got canceled.
Yes, I think there was supposed to be another meeting, but then that was canceled. That was supposed to have been your last one, but then I think the project, uh, wasn't carried forward or something, so then they didn't schedule.
So just to say, um, it could have been handled better for us, or at least for me, having been on this commission for six years. Uh, to have kind of a, a more structured, um, closure of this. So I just, that's just my personal feeling. And I just want to thank all of you who are on this commission for the short time, for the long times, multiple times that you've been on. Or, um, you know, showing up when we can and, and doing this work. Um, I think it's important. I, I do have questions on how some of these issues are gonna get answered in the future, but so far we, we have not been asked to address that, so, uh, just wanna say thank you. Thank you, Sean. Sean?
It's been a pleasure working with you guys. Sean, what is happening with this body's work? Where is it?
To a zoning administrator, uh, all variances will go to the planning commission. If the zoning adminis- similar as before, if the zoning administrator, uh, denies something or if an applicant doesn't agree to a determination with a condition, then it could be appealed to the planning commission. Or if the zoning administrator believes that a project should be upgraded to the planning commission, they have the right to move it up to the planning commission.
Who is the zoning administrator?
Uh, Nick Zorn's the development services director. It'll still be a public meeting. It'll be in the afternoon. Um, twice a month, I believe, the same time, but.
You?
I don't know if they've established the locations, yeah.
Not up here.
It, it should be in City Hall, but they potentially could have it at the community center if there's any conflict. But they haven't established, we do have an established date for the first one.
I, I think it's May third.
May third.
First, Wednesday, the same Wednesday schedule.
So we have no further responsibilities on any of these matters.
That's what I've been advised by the director.
Good. Thank you.
The council approved, um, uh, the second reading yesterday, so, um, there's thirty, a thirty day period before it takes effect. So then that's why the first zoning administrator meeting would be until May. They have to wait, wait a thirty day period.
So what does that mean for us? Does that mean we could have another meeting?
You could legally, but the, the direction is we're, we're not going to hold additional design review commission.
Okay, so you're, you're really the gatekeeper.
But development services director and the city council and the city manager are the gatekeepers. Yeah. I just advised me what I've been directed.
So officially the last one.
Yeah, that is. So again, thank you.
Would you like to dismiss the meeting?
Uh, the meeting is closed. The final meeting of the design review commission is forever closed.